Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, you stole most of my thunder and said most of what I would have shared with you. But yes, in a nutshell, this is vitally important, especially to Volusia County, because we are talking about over $675 billion, $4 trillion over a decade. And once these numbers are in, they don't change. So when we talk about services for our residents, our constituents, things like Pell Grants, firefighters' assistance, disabled veterans, Head Start, LIE HEAP, these are all programs, Medicaid, roads and highways, these are all programs that are affected by the census count. So it's really important because it touches each and every one of the constituents in their everyday life. So we want to be sure to get that accurate count. It is the first time it's going to be done online, and so in some of our rural areas, we know that that is going to pose a little bit of a challenge. But that's what our Complete Count Committee is going to do. They're going to address the challenge and determine how best to get that message and to ensure that we are getting a count in those areas. So the Complete Count Committee is very vital because they speak to the unique populations here in Volusia County. So we're really excited and really look forward to working with you and supporting you on this. We also want to let everyone know about the jobs that the census has available. We do hire within the area because you understand the demographic and the groups that you'll be working with. So it's really important that they also understand that we do have high-paying temporary jobs available as well. So we really look forward and are excited with working with Volusia County. Thank you.
And at this time, Chair, you would have to approve the committee chairs.
Right. And what I've decided to do after, actually, Ms. Gertman, Ms. Wheeler, and I each attended the presentation that she made, one of the most professional presentations I've seen at any of the workshops or anything that we've had. And I've talked with Joey Alexander, who was the chair of the 2010 census. I worked with Betty Holness prior to Brian taking over, and she and I had developed a lot of this. Brian's doing fantastic on that. And what I've done, I'm asking to co-chair. Billy Wheeler will serve at the east side, and I've asked Ms. Gertman, and she accepted to serve the west side. I think that will make us more efficient in getting two people as divided as we are with the curtain only, the distance. I think that'll be better. So I would like to put their names out for those two positions. And Ms. Gertman.
I just wanted to ask regarding the jobs and hiring, when will the hiring begin? Because when I'm talking to people in the community and I'm saying, "Jobs are available," but I wasn't sure if that was now or November or what that timeline is.
Yes, it's an ongoing process. We actually hire in phases. So right now, we have area census offices that are being opened. So it's being staffed with recruiting staff because that's the, we start with recruiting, administration, and clerks. So that's the initial phase.
Okay, awesome.
Then we move into address canvassing, then there's enumeration. So the jobs just continue.
Okay, great.
And you are also offered, you can, they'll call you three times. The first two times, you can say, "I'm not ready," or "This isn't a position I want," and they'll call you again. On the third time, they take you out the pool.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. That's very helpful.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Denny's, I'm hoping you have a motion there.
I do, but a question too, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and make the motion to follow up with my question. I move approval of resolution to form the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Denny, second by Post. Any further discussion? That motion would include that the two co-chairs would be Ms. Councilmember Wheeler and Councilmember Gertman. So any objection to that motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only question is, I'm looking at the subcommittees here, and I see the Daytona Chamber, I see Halifax Urban Ministries, I see the United Way. Most of, all of these are pretty much centered in the Daytona region. Where is southeast Volusia in this?
Okay, this is just the beginning. If we, what I can do, if there are some additional names that we need to add, we definitely can do that, Ms. Denny's. But what we tried to do, we went to the last list that we had, tried to work off of that list, and then, but there are some additional names that we need, we can.
List from where?
Last census that we had in 2012.
From 10 years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
The county's grown a little bit in 10 years.
But we have, I understand. But I can definitely get with you, and we can get some additional names to assist us.
It's a great point, and I definitely feel we can go ahead and fill in the gaps in southeast and also southwest, I see, as well. So just looking myself. So we can definitely, we'll work hard to make sure we have great representation from those areas.
Well, the Daytona Chamber does a great job. That's not what I'm saying. There are multiple other chambers.
Exactly. We've grown so much in that 10 years. There's chambers that didn't exist or were just forming 10 years ago that now are here. So we have to address that as well.
So I would just ask you going forward, and I'll be watching it from afar, that there's inclusion from the entire county represented on these committees.
I definitely understand.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that Ms. Gertman and Ms. Wheeler will be actually involved in that as well. So, Ms. Post.
Speaking of inclusion, Brian, I know that we've discussed, and I just wanted to say that I'm very happy to see that you have included the council on aging in this committee and that we have Sarah Gertis on board.
Right.
And she has agreed.
Yeah.
So that's good. But I wanted to say that I'm very, very happy to see that because certainly, that's the majority of our community. So, thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We'll now move to the item seven. These are public hearings, and we'll open up the public hearing for item number seven, which is rezoning of property, which we'll look at Mr. Irvin.
Good morning. Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you today is an administrative request to rezone approximately 365 acres located in the north peninsula. This property consists of 1,940 lots. It is basically bounded to the north by Bicentennial Park, to the south by the city of Ormond Beach. On the east, there's commercial property along A1A that is the boundary, and then John Anderson Drive on the west side. The subject property, as you can see, is developed. I would like to point on page 7-26, there's an aerial, and you can see that the land use pattern out there shows that, I would say, at least 95% of the land, if not more, is already developed for residential uses. As you can see on page 7-10, this gives you the history of this subject area. This was originally part of the north Ormond Peninsula zoning district. That was created in 1953. And as you can see there, back in 1953, the minimum requirements for lot areas, lot width, setbacks, and everything else are considerably different than what we have currently. That one category, which shows, the current, shows you that the R4 zoning, which is currently applicable to this subject property, requires a width of 75 feet, lot area 7,500 square feet, and side yard setbacks of eight and 12, for a total combined of 20. This has created the problem we have here. And what has happened is staff has gone through, after hearing several different complaints from the residents about the fact of the zoning. Also, we have a recommendation from the Smart Growth Committee back in 2015 to make these changes. And this was something that was brought to the attention of the council back in October of 2017, when we were asking to make some changes to our zoning regulations. So this is the third area that we're bringing forward to you. The whole point of this is to address those concerns in regards to the nonconformity that is created. If you look on page 724 of your agenda packet, that map gives you an idea of the nonconformity that is occurring. Those orange parcels are actually conforming. There's 118 of them. There's 1,940 lots. That means there's over 1,800 lots that are legal, nonconforming lots. That creates a great deal of problem to the residents. Basically, if they are looking to build, expand, or otherwise modify their existing structure, they have some difficulties. Many times, they are required to have to go through a variance, which can cost upwards of $1,000 and delay their activities by upwards of three months. So the whole point behind this is to hopefully eliminate some of that delay, make it easier for these folks to do something with their property, and eliminate some barriers that are occurring. On page 7-22 is a table, a series of tables that were sent out to the residents prior to an April 2nd, 2019, public workshop where we went through and explained why we were going forward on this. At that workshop, there was approximately 80 residents from this area who came in to find out what was going on, ask questions, get some feedback. And as you can see in the tables, we tried to provide them with a comparison of both, not only the dimensional requirements, but what are allowed as, you know, uses within these respective zonings. And as you can see, they're very similar. There's not going to be any change in regards necessarily in regards to permitted uses. And actually, the change in the dimensional requirements will accommodate the majority of these residents. The analysis that staff went through, and I can tell you, was very, very thorough. There's approximately 26 subdivisions that are between Bicentennial Park and the city of Ormond Beach. They went through every one of those to look at every one of the lots. I wanted to kind of point this out because on 7-36, that's one of many of these subdivisions. Samantha West, who's a planner, pulled all the subdivision plots, looked at the dimensional standards that were shown on those individual lots, looked at the aerials, and was able to determine whether or not they were not conforming because of lot width, lot area, setbacks, et cetera. So that's how we were able to come to the determination that we had over 1,800 lots that were not conforming. And as you can see by these different things, you have some that are typical width of 60 feet, some actually have the minimum width of 75 feet, but they may not have the total area. The other aspect is some of the homes are built to five-foot side yard setbacks, which again creates these problems. So you have three factors that are creating problems for these residents to continue in using their existing structures as they're currently constructed. This is the meat of why we're doing this. If, God forbid, we had a hurricane or other sort of natural disaster and any of these homes were destroyed, they would not be able to build back to that footprint that they currently exist. What you would see is they would have to meet the side yard setbacks and the front yard setback, and they would have to possibly go through some variance or nonconforming lot situations. So what we're trying to do here is to accomplish some of the concerns that were brought by the Smart Growth Committee and also by some of the residents in that making sure that in the future, if anyone wants to improve their home, they can do so with just a simple building permit, as opposed to having to go through the process of either getting a variance or having to go through and getting a nonconforming lot letter to verify that the lot is buildable. We believe that this change will address the majority of the concerns we've identified. We did have an April 2nd meeting, which is above and beyond what is normally required, in order to make sure that the public was informed, and that way, they could ask some questions, and we could feedback, get some feedback from them, and be able to make sure we are addressing their concerns. I can tell you that there were several concerns that were voiced by many of the residents. First, that this was being done to force the extension of sanitary sewer from Ormond Beach into their area. I can tell you the rezoning will not result in that. This is not, has nothing to do with the forced extension of sanitary sewer in the Ormond by the Sea area.
Can you repeat that, Clay?
Once again, the rezoning of this property from R4 to R5 will not mandate the extension of sanitary sewer from Ormond Beach into the Ormond by the Sea North Peninsula area. The other aspect is that it was going to be forcing annexation into the city of Ormond Beach. That is not the case. Again, the rezoning will not result in forced annexation of the properties that are currently in Ormond by the Sea North Peninsula. The other aspect was that this was being done to address a potential redevelopment of the area by a major developer, and this is one step in being able to force these folks to sell so that that way, someone could come in and redevelop the land. This has nothing to do with that. We did not have any kind of intent for, other than allowing those property owners to be able to utilize their existing structure. There was a concern about the setback, and I think this was confusion because they felt that we were allowing for homes to be built closer to each other. And in all reality, all we are doing is justifying the existing setbacks that many of the properties up there currently exist. Samantha's gone through and looked at a majority of these properties based on aerial photography. And basically, what you see is, I would say, at least 80 to 90% are at a five-foot side yard setback. So again, we're doing this to ensure that that way, residents don't face additional struggles if they try to do any kind of improvements or expansion of their home. So we did provide this information to them at the April 2nd meeting, got feedback. It was presented to the PLDRC. There was no one in attendance to speak out for this potential rezoning. The PLDRC made a recommendation of approval. That was unanimous, and it's here today before you. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I do have to make sure it's clear that this does require two readings because it is administrative rezoning. And in order for us to hold it in the morning, in other words, in order for the second hearing to be before 5:00, we have to have a majority plus one on the motion.
On the motion, or?
In other words, like, if the council decides that this is something they want and it's approved, we have to have majority plus one. So we would need at least five council members to vote for it in order to have it before 5:00.
Okay. I have no one wishing to speak from the public. I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Post.
So Clay, I know I attended that April 2nd meeting with you, and there were, there was a lot of public concern on a number of different levels. And I think that I've definitely responded to a number of those, and you've certainly responded point by point, which I'm very grateful for, in the agenda. You and I have had many discussions on this particular issue happening everywhere, where zoning had been changed in the past for whatever reasons, and the residents that actually lived in those areas maybe weren't necessarily taken into consideration, and they weren't either grandfathered in or taken into account in considering the zoning. So they're not able to come back and do different things. And we're still discussing a number of other areas in the county in reference to that. But, so, in all the discussions that we've had, I would move that, and recommend the motion that we schedule the second hearing for July 16th, 2019.
Let's get the motion to approve this to start with.
That's the motion.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay. I thought she said to reschedule the second hearing.
Well, that is the recommended motion. So I'm, I'm moving that we schedule the second hearing for July 16th, 2019, with a time certain of 10:30 a.m.
Any discussion? That wasn't what I had down is the motion. Is that?
It's on 07.
But shouldn't we approve this first?
No.
You're kidding me?
No.
You are on information, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm just reading, I'm just reading what I have.
You were not given.
We have a motion to schedule the second hearing. This motion to be for July the 16th, is that correct?
At 10:30, yes.
At 10:30?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing the motion to reschedule the second hearing of this to July the 16th passes unanimously. That's 7-0. And Clay, we worked on something like this, similar in Ormond Beach with some properties. And the biggest thing is, this is for the people. This is for the people. So why anybody would want to object to this? I mean, there's cases where people were not even allowed to refinance anything. If a part of a house would be destroyed, not by a disaster like wiping things off like Mexico Beach, but a fire, could have stopped someone from not even being able to do that. There were cases where people weren't able to get financing because of that, because they weren't assured that they would be able to rebuild. It also affected insurance. So to me, this was a slam dunk for the people, and I'm sure you made them aware of that. And people always have questions, but if any one of them had ever had a situation to where they couldn't have anything happen, you would have had them on your side. But, okay, this is completed and done? We got more than the five? We got the seven?
Thank you.
We'll move to item eight.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, as the group gathers, we have here before this, on this item, is the committee ranking for a solid waste collection contract. Just a little history for the public at large. You know, Volusia County, we use a, an outside contractor to pick up our curbside garbage, and we've done that for many, many years. Our current provider has been doing it for over seven years. They had a seven-year contract with the ability to add seven, and they elected to not do that. Again, the current contractor elected to put it back out on the market. So they did work with us, and we were grateful to make sure that we had time to put together a good proposal and put it out on the street. Committee has met and looked at these proposals, and Regina will go over the results today. And the task today is to direct us as to which contractor you would like us to go ahead and negotiate a price with. There's more work to be done on this issue after that, and we'll talk about that as we go into the presentation. But today, it's about selecting the contractor, and then, from that point, we'll go over what the other steps will be. Regina?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Honorable councilmembers, Regina Montgomery, Solid Waste Director. The item, as Mr. Recktonwall said today, is asking approval of the ranking and authorize us to negotiate an agreement for residential solid waste collection services. The RFP, the RFP was released in March of this year, and we sought pricing for two levels of service and with two recycling options. The RFP did close on May 8th, 2019. The selection committee met on June 5th, 2019. They concluded that our base level of service with dual-sort recycling was the most cost-efficient. They ranked the four respondents, and today, they are recommending negotiation of a contract with the top-ranked firm of FCC. And however, if those negotiations were to fail, we're also requesting to then move to the second-ranked firm, which is WCA of Florida. Our base level of service is in essence our current level of service. We have a once-a-week garbage bulk recycling and yard trash collection. The only difference here with the new contract will be that we have an allowance that residents, instead of one additional personal container, they will now be allowed to put out two personal containers each week. Some of the benefits of the new proposal will be that service days will remain the same for all county residents. Also, bulk items will be collected on the garbage day if curbside, so this will reduce the amount of collection trucks that are on our roads for the collection. The proposal also includes new compressed natural gas collection trucks. And just a side note, the solid waste division serves as the customer service office for this contract. Residents call our office at the landfill. However, FCC is committed to have a local customer service office in Volusia County as well. Also, the contract will have a performance bond equal to the contract value. There will be penalty clauses in the contract for missed pickups if they're not resolved within, like, a 24-hour period. And the new contract will allow for an annual CPI adjustment to adjust for inflation. This next chart, on the left-hand side are current contractor costs. Their contract allows Republic to request a CPI adjustment to be effective in October. So if that CPI adjustment is approved, you can see their annual costs. And on the right side, the annual costs are listed for the four respondents re-received through the RFP process. So the takeaway here is, all the proposals are going to require an adjustment to our current non-ad valorem assessment, which for FY '19 is set at $238 a year per household. And just some history, in 2009, the non-ad valorem assessment was set at $190 per year with a cap of $240 per year. The non-ad valorem assessment needs to fund contractor service costs, administrative and recycling processing costs, and possibility of an emergency reserve for storm debris removal.
This is something that we're proposing. This is a little new. I'd like to, we've talked about looking at maybe a $2 charge within this assessment. As you know, you know, we've been through several storms as of late. We do not always get reimbursed. We never get reimbursed the full amount. So the idea being, you know, those costs are then picked up by the various, you know, the MSD in our case. And so what we're looking at is building a small reserve for the occasions where we're not reimbursed, or what ports we're not reimbursed, and remind everyone that there are storms that occur that will not be fee-maligable, tornadoes, floods, things of that nature that don't rise to that level, but still have a debris pickup element that would be over and above what we would normally do. So it's just, we thought it would be an opportunity to build a little bit of a reserve over the period of the contract. Just, again, I think smart finance by putting some stuff away ahead of time.
As Mr. Recktonwall said, we still have more work to do. So we have an assessment timeline here. At your next meeting, July 16th, we'll be bringing an item to discuss the next year assessment and the new cap we need to set. And of course, this will help us to determine, because we do have to have a first-class letter mailed to residents 20 days prior to the public hearing. Our deadline to submit a proposed assessment rate for TRIM is July 26th. Our target date to actually bring back a collection contract for council approval is August 6th of this year. And our target date for the public hearing to adopt the rate resolution and the cap will be August 20th of this year. And of course, we have to submit our final non-ad valorem rate to the property appraiser by September 13th, 2019.
Mr. Johnson?
My only question is, our statement is on a reserve fund, that it can't be moved somewhere else, that it's going to absolutely stay in this reserve fund for cleanup.
Right. It can only be used, just, excuse me, just as the money you would collect in this assessment would go for the pickup of your garbage and your recycling now, that would only be used for either, sometimes the company that we have picks up more, or we use a debris contractor, but it would have to be for debris.
Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a good point, Councilmember, because I was going to ask along those lines, too. That's a really good statement to make. My question, though, is going to go to the process. The RFP, when we put the RFP out, did we have a minimum for service level on what kind of trucks, as far as how many claw trucks we wanted?
We indicated in that RFP that there would be two claw trucks.
So that, that's, that was our, that was our request?
Yes.
And how many claw trucks is this provider bringing in?
This is Charles Merkley from FCC.
Good morning, Chairman, councilmembers. In the proposal, we did exactly what it requested. We're bringing two CNG clam trucks and additional reel orders that do it the same way.
So you'll have two claw trucks?
That's correct.
Okay, if I could talk with staff, thank you. And that's in the contract?
It will be placed in the contract once we negotiate it.
Okay. Okay. That wasn't my understanding, but okay. That's, that's a big one. That was a game changer for me if that wasn't in there. So on the record, there will be, you'll have two of those for all of Volusia County.
Well, what we're doing right now is just giving them permission to negotiate, and what we will vote on if they don't do that.
And you've made it clear that that's important to be in.
I won't, I won't give power to negotiate if this isn't in there. This is big.
Yes, it was mentioned in the RFP.
I know it was mentioned, but it's an agreement between this vendor. It will be in our contract.
Yes, it will.
Okay. I want to make sure that when we put an RFP out with minimum service requirements, that it's, that's all I have. Thank you.
That's, that's a great point, Ms. Denny's, and we'll make sure that it's in there. And Mr. Merkley here has worked in our county before with a previous provider, so he's certainly familiar with Volusia County.
Yeah, like I had, I'm a local resident for 40 years.
That helps. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the selection ranking and authorization to negotiate agreement for residential solid waste collection.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Denny, second by Gertman. Any additional comments? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, your motion passes unanimously. You have your orders?
Thank you.
Follow-up. Move to item nine. Rick Carl.
Mr. Chair, Rick Carl, Director of Aviation Economic Resources. Here with Brad Harris, your acting economic development director, and Virgil Kimball, business. I'm here with Brad Harris, your Acting Economic Development Director, and Virgil Kimball, Business Specialist. We're asking your approval of our fee schedule and operating agreements with the foreign trade zone. We have reconstituted this foreign trade zone. We've had one for some time, went through the process of redoing it, updating it, and this is our procedures and fee schedules and agreements and requirements for operators. Virgil Kimball, I have to hand it to Virgil, he got in the weeds with this stuff, figured this out. This is very complicated stuff to operate this. It's a, it's a very important tool in our toolbox. In fact, Orbit Beyond, the company that is planning to go into the radon facility with a NASA grant, is expecting this, so we, there is some time urgency with this. I apologize for the late addition of the materials with this. I'd like to thank Elizabeth Murphy in Dan's office, who really did Yeoman's job to pull all this stuff together. So Virgil and I are here. If you have any questions, this is an approval that we need to move forward. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
You're paying a motion for the operating agreement revised zone schedule for foreign trade zone.
Turn on your microphone.
Yes. If one of you could just explain for the public what the, I know that we have talked about it at length, but the foreign trade zone, number 198, is?
Yes. Generally, I can speak about it in general terms. Virgil can get down in the weeds with it, but this, a foreign trade zone is a, it allows an applicant, a company, to come in and set up a area of business or part of the building or a whole building, designate this, which they will do through this application process, which allows the company then to bring in goods for, from overseas, assemble the products without having to pay duties and tariffs, and then export. So it's a, it's a, it's a cost-savings mechanism that allows manufacturers to save money as they assemble products here locally. That's basically it in a nutshell. So if there's any further questions, we can.
And that's working in our, in our discussions and our partnerships?
Yes, it's a very important tool to offer to companies, to recruit companies here to know that we have that capability.
Thank you. Go ahead, Virgil.
There was a motion there somewhere.
Excuse me, Virgil Kimball, Business Specialist with the Economic Development Division. Not only is it for recruiting, but we have current companies in the county that business can change, business situations can change, and it does give them an opportunity. The basis of the foreign trade zone allows and it promotes U.S. jobs. So as opposed to off-sea manufacturing and just importing a finished product, it allows and it provides for the fact that a company can be competitive and have jobs in the U.S. and still be able to produce the goods here with foreign components.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Denny's.
So the purpose of the, I understand the purpose of this very well, and to be competitive, but I have to, I have to go here because I've read it, I've researched it, I've thought about it. So I'm going to go to the risk management position, our risk management position on this. How many other areas require bond in their trade-free zone?
Ms. Denny's. So there are two different types of bonds that are in our proposal. So the company will be required, the 131 bond with customs. That bond would be exercised if they were to not pay duties, to customs on that. Now, the other bond that's being here, and I can think of one particularly in El Paso, which is a very busy zone, they require the same kind of bond. This bond would be in case the county was to ever incur any kind of fines or fees or charges, although we have written documentation from the board, from some of our senior analysts at the board, that that's never happened.
That's my point. Say that again. That's never happened.
That has never happened.
Yet, and yet, we're going to require a performance bond.
It's a bond in favor of the county in case the county was to be somehow held liable for any actions of an operator.
I understand. Do we require this on other manufacturing positions that get QTI incentives or anything else like this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So that's where I'm going. If we're trying to, we're talking about opening up all these incentives, and you just, we were just at Team Volusia. We just heard Space Florida's presentation about branding and expanding the aerospace aviation market. We're setting up the free trade zones. We're putting in the infrastructure. We're collaborating with cities. We're putting in water. We're going to the legislature. We're getting funding. We're building it line upon line upon line, and here we come and say, oh, by the way, this has never happened, but we're going to require a performance bond. And I'm, I think at some point, our risk management is getting a little bit out of control here, and I think that piece of it, I believe, is a barrier to where we say we want to go, Mr. Manager. If we say this is what we want to be, we want to be competitive, we've just set up a barrier that doesn't, and to use El Paso, Texas as an example, are there other free trade zones in the state of Florida?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, there are.
All over.
Ms. Denny's, if I could maybe address this. We discussed this internally with some debate. What we, the economic development team has agreed to do is to go proceed with these as recommended by risk management and as advised by county attorney's office. And if it becomes an obstacle, we can come back to you and amend this if it looks like it's going to be an obstacle. We don't, we don't know how burdensome this will actually be on a company.
If that's the case, then we could take credit then as an incentive at that point, where you're removing something that could be part of a package that was put together.
But there's one thing, if we want to be competitive and we're in an equal playing field, and somebody takes a look at this and says they're requiring two bonds on, trust me, on the checklist, we just went down a notch. So.
Well, if the council, if the county council wishes to assume the risk, I mean, it's a.
There is, Mr. Carl, with all due respect, there's been no risk indicated ever, ever. There's nothing on the record. So risk management, and I'm not even going to throw the inflatables in to risk management, but there's one thing about being cautious, there's another thing about running scared and creating barriers that don't, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, Council, that don't need to be there for the sake of doing what we're doing. Why would we do this? So I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to approve the operating agreement revised zone schedule for foreign trade zone number 198 minus the bond equal to the greater of 100,000 or 10% of the average projected duties and tariffs. That second bond, if it's necessary, it can be renegotiated on a case-by-case basis to be added. I'd rather add it to a project that has a risk element than to put it in and assume there is one.
I will second that.
Yeah, I think this is a slippery slope.
Motion made by Denny's, second by Gertman. Let's have discussion, Rick.
If I could just clarify, the custom and border patrol does require a bond, and that will stay in, but the bond in favor of the county, you're eliminating, just for the record.
And we have a motion, the second, Mr. Johnson.
I agree with what you're saying, Ms. Denny's, and I understand that risk management's trying to protect the county, but do other? The only one I heard was El Paso. Obviously, I mean, if there was more of them or overwhelming amount, you'd have probably brought that up. And I have to agree with Ms. Denny's. We need to make it as easy as possible because we're also going to be vying with Seminole, Bivard, Orange, all the counties around us, and we have to make it as simple as possible. So I understand what risk management's doing, so I'm not going to throw a rock at them. That's just up to us to say, no, that's not the way. So I agree 100% that we got to make it as simple and make these incentives as much as we can.
Dr. Lowry.
I just wanted to ask, you said there were other of these in Florida?
Yes, sir.
And they do not require the bond that Ms. Denny's is referring to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I saw it.
Okay. I mean, I agree, but the cost of a $100,000 performance bond for a company is minimal. Just for example, it's not a big hit, but it does show that we care by eliminating it. Jacksonville doesn't have it. I know they do a lot in Jacksonville. Tampa doesn't have one, is not one in Tampa. Tampa has a huge zone. I used to use one in, partly, in trade-free, because it does give you the advantage of taking components in to import and then assembling a finished product and ship it out, which is, rather than paying a tariff of 11%, 12%, 15%, 25% on it to produce it and then export it to somewhere where there's another tariff added where you're sending it. So it's a good tool. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimous, and thank Council for delving into this. Item 10. This is a request for the sponsorship, the request of the Embassy of Hope Foundation.
Good morning, Chair.
Oh, sorry.
County Council. This is Brian Roth, Activity Project Manager. We have another sponsorship request from the Embassy of Hope Foundation. I have a sponsorship amount of $1,250 and for your approval.
This week, oh, sorry. This week.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move approval of the sponsorship request from Embassy of Hope Foundation 22nd Vince Carter Embassy of Hope Foundation Charity Gala in the amount of $1,250.
No, $1,250.
$1,250, I'm sorry. Boy, they were really happy. $1,250, sorry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Denny's. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Gertman, I was waiting.
I just wondered, that number doesn't appear on their partnership package, so how did we get to $1,250?
I think on the application itself, it says for six tickets to ensure that I have seven, that it was 100. I called them and asked, additional $150 to make sure that seven were there.
Oh, okay.
That's why I got the $1,250.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me, that's, excuse me, that's a really good point, Councilwoman Gertman. So do we have a table? Are we a sponsor? Or we're just buying tickets?
With the table. Yes, ma'am.
So we will have, we?
Six tickets.
We have seven tickets.
Well, that's, that's.
We would have a table. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that we're a sponsor.
Yeah, that's correct, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous to fund the 22nd Vince Carter Embassy of Hope Foundation Charity Gala in the amount, sponsorship amount of $1,250. We'll move to item 11, and any council member can make the nomination to appoint an elected official for the remainder of a four-year term for the TDC.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, Dr. Lowry.
I'd like to nominate Chris Knabich from Daytona.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Wheeler. Motion made by Lowry, seconded by Wheeler to nominate Chris Knabich for the remainder to serve on the TDC. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. We'll now move to item 12, and that's the appointment to the Business Incubator position.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Wheeler.
I'd like to move approval of Edith Shelley, appointment to the Business Incubator Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We don't need a second?
We don't need a second. They're appointments.
Okay. Don't need a second. Any objection to the nomination of Edith Shelley to the Business Incubator Advisory Board? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we'll move to item 13.
Isn't that four positions?
There are some more appointments.
I'm sorry?
There are some more appointments under item 12. There are four positions.
So you have to have four?
Yes, sir.
And we only have four people there?
Yes, sir. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, Ms. Post.
I'd like to appoint Jeffrey Badavich to the Business Incubator Advisory Board.
Jeffrey Badavich has been nominated and appointed to the Business Incubator Advisory Board. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. I'll entertain two more. Ms. Wheeler.
Nope. Oops, sorry.
Ms. Denny's.
Mr. Chair, I will nominate John Pfeifer.
John Pfeifer has been nominated to be appointed to the Business Incubator Advisory Board. Any objection? Hearing none, John Pfeifer is confirmed to be appointed. And we have one more, and I'm assuming that Lou Paris. Ms. Gertman.
I would nominate Lou Paris.
Lou Paris has been nominated for the Business Incubator Advisory Board. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Now then, we'll go to 13. Thanks for keeping me in line. I moved just a little fast on that one. We need an appointment.
Move to appoint.
Sorry?
Move to appoint Blaine Lansbury to the Daytona Beach Racing.
Ms. Post has moved to appoint Blaine Lansbury for the Daytona Beach Racing and Recreational Facilities Commission for the term that commences July 1st, expires July 1st, 2023. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Now we'll move to item 14. This is an appointment for VGMC. We need two positions for four terms. Ms. Denny's.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Daniel Robbins for the VGMC, please.
Daniel Robbins is nominated for the VGMC, which begins July 1st and expires, 2019, expires in 23. Any objection to Daniel Robbins being appointed to the VGMC? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we need one more. Ms. Post.
I move to appoint John Samuelson to the Volusia Growth Management Commission.
You say John Samuelson?
John Samuelson to the Volusia Growth Management Commission.
John Samuelson has been nominated to be appointed to the VGMC by Ms. Post. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous, and we'll move to item 15 for appointments to the Volusia County IDA. We need two. Ms. Denny's.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Bliss Jamison.
Bliss Jamison is nominated to be appointed by Ms. Denny's to the VG, C-I-D-A. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. We have two positions. We need one more. Ms. Wheeler.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint James Smith.
James Smith has been appointed by Ms. Wheeler for the Volusia County Industrial Development Authority. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And we will not break for lunch unless somebody, unless four of you overrule me, and we will go to public participation. And we have John Nicholson wishes to speak. State your name and address for the record.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. I have four things here. The first one is regarding the Daytona Beach lot. Daytona Beach years ago had a certain image. When you thought of Daytona Beach and you got an image of it, you saw the pier, you saw the rides on the top, you saw the tower, you saw all the steps. All of that is gone. Everything has changed drastically. Jim went through, and anything that reminded you of 50s, Daytona Beach has now been gone. I don't want you to do the same thing to Daytona Beach. I would ask you to think of it holistically as a community that is the old. I don't want it to be another Daytona Beach. I want it to be distinct and different. Secondly, I want to bring up again the 1% sales tax. We need it. I think you all have got to start pushing it, but as a needs, not this fluffy, you know, everybody gets something bit, because we don't need everything. There is a distinct entity called the Springs. We all know it. We all want to protect it. That has to be done regardless of the cost. So I'm not going to spend the same amount of money in Daytona Beach that I would on the Springs, because they need it. The same thing with Southeast Volusia, Oak Hill. The gentleman, the mayor, several times said, we don't have the money. Well, yeah, they don't. So that's when all the rest of us chip in to get done what needs to be done. So when you do the 1%, and I'm asking you to do the whole nine yards, find out what absolutely needs to be done. Tell the people, because remember, the first thing I said was trust. They don't trust you. Remember the Echo? Remember the school? All of these things, the Lotto, whatnot, were all meant to do one thing and then they switched it. I want you to be absolutely positive. We absolutely need this road. We absolutely need these sewers taken out. These septic tanks have got to go. So make a list of what absolutely needs to be done and promise them and. So make a list of what absolutely needs to be done and promise them and put it in writing that this is what you will do and that's why we need the 1%. Because you did the half percent because you said, "Oh, they wouldn't go for it." We won't get everything done, but at least we'll get some money. Well, I don't like the idea of some money and we'll do some things. We absolutely need certain things done, and I'm asking you to find out what those certain things are, present it to the public, and say we need a 1% to absolutely get these things done for Volusia County as a whole and not as individual giveaways to cities. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll go to discussions of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Reckonwald.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we've got one housekeeping item. You may have, we're going to bring it up on your time, but I'll just hit it now. At the last meeting, there was an appointment to the Historic Preservation Board. The person who was appointed, I'm sure is very capable, but they did not fit the criteria of living on the east side of the county. So I would ask that we rescind that appointment and continue to look for someone for the east side who resides on the east side of the county for the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay, what I need is a motion to rescind the nomination of Ms. Moore from the Historic Preservation Board. Ms. Wheeler.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Lowry, seconded by Ms. Wheeler. Any objection to the rescension, rescension, if that's a word, rescinding the most, the applicant from the Historic Preservation Board? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of staff? Is this then a district appointee?
It was supposed-
This is a large appointee, and we've been trying to find somebody to do that. I've got some feelers out, but also what I would ask is especially the East Volusia people, all of y'all to look and see if you can find someone. I have been in contact with some people over there saying, "Hey, who can we find?" And this has been ongoing for quite some time. This has been an open board for quite a bit of time. I just didn't want to correct your last meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
But it's, we are looking, but we need everybody to look and find, not just somebody. This takes a special person.
It does. Okay. Okay, George.
Okay, the next item is not housekeeping, it is a major duty. As you know, we are, we did the five-year forecast and, of course, that was your first kind of peek at what we were thinking in terms of budget. What I'd like to do today is hand out the proposed budget so that on the next meeting, on the 16th, everyone will have had time to study it. And what I'd like to do, or what we have done, I should say, I've changed the format and I'm giving basically the budget in a form that I believe is a little easier for everyone to understand, the public to take a look at. The other format is still available and will be given out, it's being printed as we speak. And as you know, that's the gigantic binder style that gets stripped down to, you know, a very detailed look. But this is designed to act more as a guide. I've put in some what I call dashboards on the various areas so that you can take a look both graphically and at the numbers themselves. What we have before you is what I feel is a budget that kind of converts the recent success that we've had. We last year went to rollback and I think that was very good for the citizens and a good timing. This particular year, we have some growth and we have some needs and I've tried to match them up. We definitely, a lot of what you'll see in there is improvements to the public safety as we've discussed at workshops with EMS and Fire. We also have systems and, you know, we've done a great job of saving up for the 800 megahertz system that's going out on the street this summer. Does allow a little bit of room in case the price is a little higher than we thought. You never really know what things cost until they actually are bid out. We also have the CAD dispatch system and, as we said, additional personnel in Fire and EMS to try to get our response times in line with standards that we had talked about previously in the year. We also have to deal with some things in this budget and we have rising costs, rising costs of retirement, especially in the special risk category, increases in other insurances. But we have good news, too. We actually have decreases in health insurance and we're able to take those savings and move them into other areas within the general fund and the other funds wherever the employees resided and they were able to get that savings. Also, I think it's going to allow us to at least, and this is what I think will be the discussion for next meeting, you know, I have money put in reserves for Sun Rail and for the transition and, of course, our normal reserves. It gets us to where the stated goal that you have had of 10% across the funds and that's something that we can talk about if you want to get there now or if you, how you would want to stagger that over the next few years. But I do believe that the responsible budget, it sets us up for continued success no matter what gets thrown at us. And I do want to thank the budget staff, but also the staff of all the department heads who contribute. This process for, we talked about it before, this starts at Christmas with people starting to look at what their capital needs are and continues on through. And really now, we talk from this point on about where we can go. And finally, I will say, as I am prepared and working with our community information folks to go out into the community and discuss these items and where we're at. Again, we've got time between now and the actual hearings in September. We do need to set the trim rate at the next meeting, but again, that's a maximum and then we can work from there. So I'm very excited about this particular way we've boiled the budget down into categories that I think makes it easier for people to see what's happening, make decisions and understand it. And again, we're printing the other stuff as we speak, so you'll have that as well. So if you want to take a deep dive in any area, you're going to have that information as well. So with that, one last, any questions on this? And I do have one more thing.
Okay. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Reckonwald, what I don't see here, and what I'm going to ask for is that spreadsheet, that Excel spreadsheet. We need that somewhere. We talked about, we've had meetings since then. It's kind of cloaked in there, so the millage is cloaked. We talked about, there's nothing, unless I'm missing it and I've just, I just received it, but-
Right.
The current millage is what, 5.964, right?
Yes.
5.964. Well, we talked, 6.94, so we talked about a partial rollback and I thought you were going to be bringing us several options.
Well, we, what we have for you is, take a look at this and then for the discussion on the 16th, I have options depending on where you want to go. But I think it's easier to take a look at, you know, this is the proposed and then I have worked up options. And, you know, it's not so much about focusing on the millage, it's about, all right, well, if you don't want this particular item or that reserve or this or that, we'll pull that and we have that scenario and then you'll see where the millage puts you. So, and that is, and that is ready to go, but I feel like, you know, everyone needs to kind of take a look at the base first before we start going in a whole bunch of different options, but they're there.
I'm going to disagree with you completely. It is about the millage, Mr. Manager. It's absolutely about the millage. And not to have that as a cover sheet, I will-
Well, it's, it's right in the top.
Let's do this, we, I haven't even looked at mine.
Yeah. It's not, the millage is there and it's talked all about. I'm not saying that. I'm saying when I give the presentation of the options, I'm going to talk to you about, well, instead, you know, if we remove this or we go to a 9% reserve, obviously you'll work the millage out of that. And of course, the millage would go down if you pull anything out or push anything there. The millage is set today, I would just say, and all the funds is where they were last year, at the rollback rate of last year. So what we have is the increase only in the value of property, but we can go from there, we can work from there, but that's the baseline of starting really at the millage where you were last year.
So basically what we have is just an expanded version of the five-year projection with no changes?
There's been some changes, but they're very, they're minor and they're in detail because we got some information, you know, after the five-year forecast, but they're essentially, it's essentially the same amount.
Okay, well, if it's ready to go, I'm going to request the Excel spreadsheets and staff has it ready to go with the millage options. That's what I'm looking at. You can't, I'm not going to look at this and then come into a meeting and ask for us to-
I think I'd like to see it, too.
No, this is, this is, this is just part of the story. The number one document is the millage projections for council, at least for me. So I'm going to, I'm going to request that Excel spreadsheet with the different options that you have and we have discussed and thought that's what we were going to get today.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with that. I would like to see if we have options, what exactly they mean, you know, if we want to roll back.
Yeah, you can provide that for those that want it. I, I looked at it as an approach for us to look at what you have, for us then, and saying, "This is what we project the revenues will be to fund these operations." And then from that, if you don't want those operations, and I haven't even looked at it, if you, if you don't want the 10% reserve and you want a 9% reserve, then that gives you funding that you can use to either cut your millage-
Right.
And it's up to us to do that, or you want to cut a project, or you want to cut something out. This is-
I would like to see that.
Well, I would like for us, I mean, we're going, y'all are going to get it. I just don't see that it's essential, because I would rather us be the ones telling him what we want to cut or what we want to do than for him to say, "Here are your options and this is what it's going to cut," because that's what he's going to have to do. On the projection of what the millage is going to be, it's going to have to say, "We're going to have to cut this from it." I would rather us be the ones to examine that. And we, well, all the information is there.
Sure, we'll have all that and like, I will tell you-
But if you want a spreadsheet because you've used it, that's fine.
Sure. And also there's a taxing funds snapshot, millage rate and taxable value page. It's a tabbed out. It'll give you the millages of all the funds, going back from '07, '08 to now. It'll show you where there was rollback and we have millages below rollback. And then it also will give you the residential taxable value starts off in this year with the average value of $120,000 house, given the general fund millage rate. It'll tell you what the, what the taxes are at that point. It works out to about $15. With a new value coming on, that would be an increase of about $15 a household at $120,000 house. So I, we have all those figures in there and also I have what each mill gives you and then I can put it into the form you're talking about and working on that. Well, if you went to go, like you said, if you wanted to go to 9% reserve in some of the funds, this is what it would, this is what it would make the millage go down to. Same with if you want to push out a project. Those are your, basically your two areas with any flexibility are going to be your reserves and how much you want to, I think Mr. Patterson said the last year, roll the dice. You've got some stuff, again, in this very conservative budget because of the unknowns. We don't have, there's no, other than the money we have right now on the courthouse to work in the area, there's nothing in there about that. There's nothing in there about a lot of the extra projects that have been discussed. It's only stuff that's come before you and we have discussed. So you'll see that and, and again, I'll provide you with some of the options. We'll get that out to you. But take a look at the format you have, because I have changed the format to make it easier to make some of those determinations.
Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, and there's other options such as delaying projects.
Right.
So I, I got a time not with you on this.
Okay.
That's understood, okay.
It is, Mr. Chair, let me finish, because this, the most important thing we as a council do is set the millage, other than hire you and Mr., Mr., Matlock. I call, I, I call him, I know, no, I call him Matlock, so I'm just going to call you Matlock, so Matlock down there. So, but, but this is the most important thing we do. So, so council, and what I thought you were going to give us today, I would have rather had that than this, is a sheet with alternatives with, if we go to, I'm not talking complete rollback, but at least alternatives. And as far as deciding what we're going to cut and what we're not going to cut, I'm going to differentiate a little bit with you there, too, Mr. Chair, in that he's the manager. We set policy, we'll set the direction and-
I'll put the proposed cuts, right, exactly.
And he does the day-to-day operations, but what we set is a priority, so.
That's not a problem, especially based on where I have, you have more information probably for you in an easier format and you'll get what you're asking for on top of some more scenarios and, because believe me, I can tell you, the staff worked on many scenarios as we put it together. So it's truly just a matter of taking some of the scenarios that, I mean, we know what direction, you know, we'll drive that down, you'll have them and we'll take a look. And there'll be things, we will do it to make sure that it's safe and successful. That's what our jobs are to do. We're not trying to, you know, shortcut anything. It's, it's an idea of, well, you know, here's what we've been told and what we'll do now is, we can also go back and give you now, if you want to look at, like I said, you've got some reserve, you've got some projects to kick out, there are a few things in there, you know, that we can look at, maybe do it a different way as well, but there's not many, because it's a pretty conservative budget. So we'll be able to give you exactly what you're talking about in terms of the spreadsheet with the various options.
Well, since it's already prepared, I'm going to be working in my office this afternoon on another project. If you could have staff just make sure I get an Excel spreadsheet on my desk, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. You've got the request from those. I just, I look at it this way. You've given me something as a guideline. I'll take this to individuals, I'll take this to the public. I'll say, "Here's what we've been given." Now, if you have some suggestions or some ideas on where you think we can do differently, and this is one of the things we did in Ormond, we did it somewhat similar to this, where we would hold meetings with the public so they can say, "Here's what a budget, here's what has been given. What do you want to cut? What do you want to change? How much do you want to reduce your taxes?" You're putting the information out there, being so transparent to the people to say, "Here it is, here's, here's what we have, here's the money we expect to get. Now, where do you think we can change the way we spend your money? That's just me and I'll, we'll move this."
I think this is the most easy-
Just don't do this next year, just give it to us in private, so we, so we don't have to debate something we haven't had a chance to look at.
Well, that's the point, is honestly, it's meant to give to you now and then have that debate, so.
Exactly, and it, that's the discussion for the 16th. Ms. Post.
So I have some discussion on this as well. I've talked to staff and gone over the revenue manuals. They've been very, very great, I've been very grateful that they've been, that they've wanted to sit down and go over these things with me on several times. But anyway, explaining the various revenue sources and one of the things that I was looking at in terms of determining where we're at, what exactly we are spending money on, what is coming in and what's going out. Um, in reviewing the county fee structures of all the established fees, uh, it became clear to me that it's been a long time since we've actually looked at a lot of those fees. And, um, I would like to see actually, um, a list of all the established fees, uh, the date authorized, what the current rate is, and then what it generates. And if we could look at that, I think that's a good start in terms of seeing where we're at, because we're talking about where can we reassess and, uh, save money. And if we're not even clear at this point as to what our revenues are coming in as a council, then, um, I think that's a good area to start. So I would like to see that from staff.
Okay. I thought that we had discussed that at one of the workshops, but maybe I was wrong about looking at revising some of the fees, uh, such as, I know the parking garage was one that was mentioned. I know some of the participation fees were mentioned, but if we don't...
I, I would like, I'm, what I'm asking for is specifically a list of all the established fees, the date they were authorized, what the current rate is and what they generate, so that we can get a good, flat layout of where we're at.
Okay. Ms. Gertman.
Um, I had also mentioned wanting to see, I guess, for our tax, um, tax liens and sales and how that was being, um, I guess whether it was being sold at market value or if, if there's adjustments that we need to make there. I know we try to get back what we put out, but, um, I think we have to, again, take a look at, is there a better way to dealing with that process to be able to gain, gain more opportunity from it or maybe even give more back to the community? So I would just like to look at that process, how we're, how we're doing that and who's handling it and, and, um, if there's any market adjustments that can be made there to create more...
Is this on the property tax issue? Is that what you're referring to? I'm, I'm...
Yeah, I guess I was out with, um, code enforcement yesterday and we were talking about some of the, um, fees and impacts and some things that would go to, um, to tax, to be paid. And I guess maybe code enforcement adjustments that are made when there are fees and then someone purchases the property and then they want to get an adjustment off of the fees.
Yeah, but the liens, oh, okay.
So I just want to look at that process overall and have a better understanding of how we as a county are, are dealing with that and if there's any recoupment, better recoupment or, or savings in that environment.
Okay. Um, let's, let's move on to, off of this and go to closing comments. Ms., uh, Ms. Eckert?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. You're not going to tell us anything about Sunrail? Okay, I'll, I'll do that. Um, and we'll start today with Ms. Denny's.
So, uh, some of us were there for the Team Volusia, uh, meeting, which was really good. Frank DiBello from Space Florida presented. One of the intriguing things that he said that I think may have gone underappreciated when they were talking about incentives, there was a presentation about incentives, uh, with Team Volusia, a consultant, and the impact that made. His exact comment is incentive didn't make a bit of difference. That's Frank DiBello, President of Space Florida. He said, what makes a difference is your workforce. It's our workforce. So when we get into the weeds and we start looking at where we're going to go, the incentives didn't matter. And he, and, and I will take his word for it where he's going nationally. But anyway, I, I want to congratulate our colleague, Councilwoman Barb Gert, Gertman, for a great mistress of ceremonies the other night at the NAACP West Volusia event, your, your Freedom Fund banquet. And I mean that in all sincerity. You're a strong leader, you have great personality, uh, and you handle delays and changes with an element of grace. And that's hard to do, especially in situations like that. But it was, it was a wonderful event. First time I saw you in your element alone separately as a leader, and you're very strong. And I really appreciate your personality. It's the first time I really, really saw you in that position and, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I really mean that. We, we enjoyed it.
It was fun.
It was fun, beautiful night. And I got to go back to my little city of Oak Hill, sit upon a, Oak Hill, city upon a hill, if you will. Uh, since the meeting, we've, the governor approved the budget we stayed in for $250,000 for Oak Hill. Shocking. I thank you to the entire delegation. I'm in the process of thanking them now, the delegation that is adding to where we're going with that. And save the date, if you choose to, July 29th. We will be having, uh, ce- celebration down at Goodriches and Oak Hill with the Indian River Lagoon Council, the city, uh, the Riverside Conservancy and several other groups in the county to thank our delegation and all those involved in this great, in all water quality projects. We're just going to host it down in Oak Hill at Goodriches. So save the date, uh, for that and please join us. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to thank and, um, say congratulations to Lake Helen for they did receive a, a little help, um, for their lake from the state. So, um, I'm sure they are very appreciative of what help they can receive for that. Last two weeks, I've been on the, on the Volusia County tour. And, uh, Public Works was part of that tour. And, um, what I can say is that, um, solid waste in, in that area smelt a lot better than the birdhouse at the, at the Marine Science Center, um, where they, they cut up the rats and the fish to feed the birds. So it was a, it was a great tour. I, I love getting out, meeting the staff. And, um, I think it's real important, um, to have staff maybe remind the community why the Marine Science Center exists and how that impacts beach driving. Um, it, it became clearer to me as I saw, um, a, a snake being surgery on a snake and, um, turtles being rehabbed and just the things that were happening at that, at that center really just gave me a different appreciation for the beach driving and the opportunities there and, um, a better understanding of the connectivity. So I, I do think it's something that we need to make the public better aware of. And, and perhaps we will gain more support for that center when they realize how connected it is to, um, what happens at our beach. So that and, as I mentioned, going out with code enforcement yesterday and seeing the reality of the help that sometimes needed in our community. And I want us to focus on maybe some of our seniors that need help and if that's where some of these code enforcement challenges might be coming from over time. And so I've talked to, um, Clay about looking at that for us. And, um, also a centralized collection of data, so we can see the great work that they are doing in a, in a more centralized and holistic way. So he's looking into the system to see how we can approach that. And, and I'm just, again, really appreciate the great work that's happening. I went to Road and Bridge and saw our smart traffic flow system, which was impressive. So there's just a lot of great things happening, um, that we don't get to highlight and, and, um, address our staff and let them know the great job that they're doing. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Johnson.
All is quiet at this end.
Good. Dr. Lowry.
I'm good.
Ms. Post.
Uh, so I discussed the, uh, reviewing of the county fee structures already. The next thing I had was, uh, it was brought up, the April 2nd meeting regarding rezoning. Um, Clay Ervin had discussed that. And, uh, I just wanted to point out, that's an excellent example of us having meetings with the citizenry in the public. And I, I cannot stress how important that is in clarifying and, uh, getting rid of any misinformation or misgivings that the public might have and also working to help build those relationships, because certainly, um... Clay, how many people would you say were out there at that one? Eighty, okay? So eighty people beachside, women by the sea, that's a pretty, that's a pretty good response for that meeting. And, um, there were a lot of questions. There was a lot of questions of staff, there was a lot of questions of me. And, um, it, I received quite a bit of feedback from that meeting specifically on, um, how the public was grateful that a lot of the misinformation and, and a lot of... I think what's really important to point out is a lot of their misgivings were alleviated. So, uh, cannot stress enough how important these public meetings are to just really lay out there, it is what it is, right? And just explain to the public what's happening, um, so that everyone's aware and there are no surprises. So, very good job on that, Clay. The other thing I was talking with Clay recently on was, um, I have a citizen, um, who had contacted me about zoning in the area of Old Deland, uh, Fourth Street area, which is off of ISB, uh, in my district. And he is in an area that is zoned, uh, industrial, and it was zoned industrial many, many years ago. Uh, but there are a number of residences out there, very old residences. And, uh, he is now, uh, trying to put a shed on his property and cannot put a shed because it's not zoned for shed. And so when I looked at that and I looked at all of those other residences out there who are obviously very deeply rooted and not going anywhere anytime soon, that's certainly an area of concern for me and an area of concern for the residents that, um, for whatever reason, they weren't grandfathered in way back when the zoning was changed. But, uh, apparently this is, these are things that are coming up more and more and that we need to look at. So, um, I would like to have staff look at, uh, the non-conforming use and, uh, the latitude regarding accessory structures, uh, specifically geared toward the residential, uh, properties in the area. I'd, I'd love for you to start with that section, uh, but certainly countywide. I think that that's an excellent, uh, thing for us to be doing. So I would like to see that happen if, uh, the rest of the council is okay with that, to direct staff. Okay. Also, uh, I've talked with Regina on, uh, recycling and the profitability there. I understand now that there is zero profitability, uh, in recycling. However, um, I think we really need to work on what direction we're going. So, um, we need to figure out if we're really going to push recycling, let's start, uh, really working on the education and really getting the message out and figuring out a really good game plan there. Or, uh, you know, if, if that's not an area that, that we're going to be in, that we need to, to look at that. But I'd really like, uh, for that area to be addressed. Hope Place Library, we went and did the ribbon cutting for Hope Place Library the other day. That was very exciting. Donna was there and a number of council were there as well. And, uh, super, super exciting for that area of, of the unincorporated of Daytona. That specific area off Derbyshire, which is right next to Hope Place, is an area where you have a lot of people that, uh, walk to and from and use the bus to and from. And so I just want to spread the message that you do have a library there. There are after, after hour, uh, service, or after school services for children. There are career, uh, services for the adults in that area. There's lots of things going on, so, uh, please reach out and, uh, check that out. And, uh, I have one last thing. We discussed, um, when we were talking about the budget, we were talking about, um, really looking at our return on investment on a number of things. And our just council's discussion over, uh, the last couple of years has been to, uh, really assess and address different areas and, uh, see where we can begin thinking outside the box. A mental health court has been discussed many, many times over the last few years. I've had discussions with corrections and, uh, court services and the public safety coordinator and council way back. And, um, we've, uh, recently, there was a, a grant, the Snack and Chance Act, uh, that might have been appropriate for that. We weren't able to, uh, get in on that. But, um, when you're talking about return on investment, our specialty courts are, uh, just tremendously successful in Volusia County, tremendously successful. We have the Veterans Court, we have Drug Court, we have DUI Court and, and Team Court. And, uh, when you look at the success of those courts and the impact that it has on recidivism or that revolving door of, of people coming into our jails, it has a great impact on the jail side, but it also, um, and I think this is the, other than, uh, alleviating and, and, uh, helping the budget of corrections and, and all the corrections issues, the impact and the ripple effect that it has on the community itself is just absolutely tremendous. So I really think that it's important that we, uh, start moving forward and we have action moving forward in making the, the mental health court happen. Uh, I've been having many, uh, been having different meetings. There's a number of people on board. We have people in the courts that are on board. We have, uh, I'm going to just say, uh, I'm assuming Corrections is on board. We've, we've discussed it. But the return on investment on something like that, and especially, uh, I believe that it's also part of the, uh, the First Lady's, uh, the Governor's First Lady's initiative as well as mental health, um, is just perfect timing and just a really good direction to go. So, uh, and that's all I have. And happy July 4th, everyone. Please remember that it is, uh, in regards to Independence Day. And please be thankful for the fact that you have independence and that we do live in the United States. And we are a great country and we're a great county. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two things. Jeep Beach approached me again this year. They would like to ask for a special pass for their, uh, event for the usage of the beach that week. They bring in a lot of money for the county, they do a lot of really good things. And I would like to get everybody's approval that we can, uh, direct staff to come back with some kind of a recommendation for them, that we can kind of help them out with their event, with their beach pass. Is everybody on board with that?
I'm not.
You're not on board?
But I mean, it doesn't, I'm just one. I mean, I, I think the only complaint I had about that, and they do a lot, was the number of times that they can recycle in and out in a day was one of the things that limited some of them. So, but as far as the...
I, I would like for the staff to come back with a recommendation. Can I get an approval from...
Have you done that before?
No. Well, they have some kind of a, what do they have now?
Well, what they do, they have a, uh, pre-sale ability at the, uh...
Yeah, they have a pre-sale is all they have.
This would be something, uh, akin to a special event type, uh, being able to buy, in bulk or something like that to, uh, for a special event. I think that's what you're looking at.
We open it to one, we open it to all.
Well, it's, the tricky thing would be exactly, how do you differentiate? That's what we would wrestle with.
Well, so if it's not, I don't know. What does everybody feel? Well, no, I just need to know. I mean, do we want to move it forward to have them even come back with a proposal? Or do we want to stop it here or what?
We'll just, we'll just look at, I'm not interested in trying to open a can of worms of creating special access to the beach for every special group or any group. And I, I know that I don't like the term opening up a can of worms or something like that, but I just don't see the value of going down that path, uh, for that. Because the next thing you know, you'll have a group of 4,000 come in and we're here for the, for the week for the Shriner's Convention, uh, for example. And they say, well, we want, we want a special pass, uh, for that. So, uh, any group that would come in would start warning and to request special terms, I'd...
The only thing is, Mr. Chair, is that this group does raise, that event is to raise money to give back to the community. money to give back to the community. I mean, they raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for the community.
That's, I understand that, but-
Well, that's, I mean, you know, if you don't want to move it forward.
You, I mean-
Yeah.
You asked.
Yeah.
I don't see four people saying to look at it, unless I'm wrong.
That's why we have a seven.
I see, that's why we have it.
Okay, then the other, oops, sorry, is beach cleanup on July the 5th. You know, it's a real shame that we have all of the debris that we do have after fireworks. I would really like us to look at that at some point, you know, where we really need to be protecting our wildlife and everything else with all of the fireworks that are on the beach, and the plastic and everything that is left behind. I would ask people, if you are going to break the law and do your fireworks, clean up after yourself. I really would appreciate that. But I will be at Sun Splash Park. I hope to see a lot of you beach lovers there at nine o'clock, and we will be working from nine to 11 to help clean up the debris that someone else decided to leave, so that we all have to share in cleaning up. Please take pride in your beach, and don't leave the mess for us to clean up after you. Thank you.
We will. Also, we've worked with the Turtle Patrol, and we will be out extra early, getting the beaches cleared for our maintenance crews. I know they are staffed to the max. They'll make every effort to make that beach clean as fast as possible.
Mr. Chair, I think too, we have high tide that morning also, don't we? Which we sure don't want all of that back out into our ocean. It's a real concern that I think we're going to have to start looking at.
Absolutely.
This is really abusing our wildlife, our nature. Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of things. I've had several meetings over the last two weeks, a couple of meetings with Flagler County on some issues, trying to work cooperatively with Ormond Beach and Daytona Beach. So, those are, one of them may be a real nice economic development opportunity for the creation of jobs. Speaking of creation of jobs, Team Volusia has done an excellent job of what they've done in recruiting, and I understand that, don't know what, but I understand there's a major, major, major player coming in that's going to be offering jobs that pay tremendous amounts. I mean, in the six figures starting salaries. So, there are people that are doing a lot to make that. I also understand that the jobs that are going to be created by one of the people on Beach Street is probably going to be far in excess of what their projection was, of the jobs that are being created there that are going to be paying very well. I think that's one thing that we can do in helping making things more affordable, is to recruit high-paying jobs. Really excited about what's going on with Space Florida, and with what is happening there, and our opportunity. I mean, we are sitting, ready to go on being part of a supply companies, to supply, because they want to be close, and they described it, for those of you that weren't there, most, see, four of you were there, three, Ben, you were there, right? Yeah, five. But, but what they showed was basically a triangle of supply from Melbourne to Orlando to Daytona. And we're situated poised for that, so we just have to do more with having the training of people for that. So, that's, that's important. And I had one other thing that I was going to talk about, and it just flew out my brain, but-
You're attending Sun Rail?
The Sun Rail, I've got several meetings, one, they're both after the next meeting, but got a couple of real important, Sun Rail is pushing, pushing, pushing for May 1, 20-
21.
-1, which is less than two years, and they're pushing to force us to take that over by then. And what I consider, the information I have, in a situation is going to be very costly to us. Dan and I, Dan and George and I talked about whether or not they're in compliance with the agreement. It could be very expensive, very expensive, and they hold the key. So, they all need to work diligently on that, and I'll let you know the outcome of the meeting on the 18th, I guess it is, they got the 18th, right, George?
Yes.
18th, and then there's another one shortly after that. With that, we will adjourn at 12:15.